I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 for the Lakefield Planning Commission. We have roll calls. Can we please stand for the President?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Nordman?
Present.
Commissioner Scusso is absent. Commissioner Disick?
Present.
Coacher Fobbs is absent. Commissioner Hammond?
Present.
Commissioner Hillman?
Present.
I'm still here even though you called my name.
Oh. Cheer standing there.
That's all right, I'm still here. I understand. Does everyone have a copy of the agenda? Take that as a yes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as provided.
A moment. We have been asked since they have to type this down, and since I'm not going to repeat everything everyone says, they're asking if you can say, "This is Commissioner..."
This is Commissioner Hammond. I am making a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Commissioner Disick. Can I second your motion?
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? There are none, the motion carries. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting in December?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written or with any necessary corrections?
This is...
Who did you work?
I was the councilman. Not that. This is Commissioner Hillman. I move to approve the meeting minutes from December 7.
Commissioner Disick, can I second that as well?
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Item five, old business and table items. We have the site plan for 26600 Southfield Road. Let Eric give us a recap.
Yep. So, good evening, everyone. The next item on the agenda is for 26600 Southfield Road. This was considered at our last meeting, site plan, consideration for site plan approval from the planning commission. The project consists of an existing commercial building that will be proposed to be converted from retail to retail, however, that, the extent of that requires planning commission approval even though it is staying the same use. Generally speaking, the planning commission was open to what was being proposed except for the materials that were proposed at the time, and so the planning commission had asked the applicant to go back to see if they could become more in line with the permitted materials of the district, that being primarily stone and brick, or brick-related material, and so they did update their elevation sheet showing the breakdown of the materials that are being used. So I'm happy to say that they are in relatively, relative compliance with the ordinance in terms of the materials. As you may be aware, the limitation of the restricted materials such as the painted, I'm sorry, the metal panels is limited now to approximately 7.4 percent, and the ordinance limits that to 10 percent, and that was what the planning commission was looking forward for them to do. And so that, those panels, the metal panels, are surrounding the main entry of the building.
Do you have a way to show?
It's not connecting at this time.
Okay. So in your packet, you should have the updated version. There was a revision or an updated to that today, earlier today, which updates the total material breakdown of being 7 percent for the metal, so that again falls within the 10 percent, approximately 66.5 percent is brick, 18.12 percent is glass or the transparent of windows and doors, and then 7.94 or 8 percent is stone. So if you're...
Do they have the updated?
They do. It was the one from this morning. Earlier today. Okay. So the one from this morning. The primary change was that the surfaces on both the north and south side of the main entrance used to be stone, and those are now brick, along with primarily the rest of the facade on the north and south sides of the entrance. And then the area adjacent, surrounding the main entrance in the middle of the building, right above the entrance, was changed from a composite wood material, which was part of the restrictions, and that will now be consisting of composite stone panels, which is a permissible material. And then surrounding that in the upside-down U shape is the red metal panels, which, again, that area is limited to about 7.4 percent. And so that total totals roughly 100 percent when added together. That's the update that the applicant has come up with, and I believe they are here to answer any questions, but that was primarily the concern at our last meeting.
The commissioners have had the opportunity to review the revised site plan. They seem to have addressed our concerns from the last meeting. Are there any additional comments, questions, concerns, or...
I remember in my review of the packet a few days ago, there was a question regarding the color the brick would be painted. Do we have an answer on that?
The specifics of the color, we do not. So that is one thing I think the planning commission should consider, what the colors... There's two different types of colors according to the plans, so it looks like there may be a palette of two shades of a color or two entirely different colors altogether, so the applicant may consider answering that question.
Sure. You mentioned the applicant is here, but it's not, obviously not the same gentleman that was here last time, so...
I don't believe they are here. I thought I had seen him, sorry.
No? Okay.
Yeah, it looks to be a grayscale to kind of complement the entryway, the panels over the entryway.
And only two colors. There's only two colors that they're painting the brick. So four of the panels are one color and two of the sections are a different color of gray. So it's not like there's six different shades of gray in this thing.
That's my interpretation.
So these are the colors, so it's red and two different shades of gray?
The red is confirmed, however, the color one and color two is how it's labeled, and so I have no more detailed information than that. If that's just a shade of gray or a brown or a black, I can't answer that.
Did you just say it was gray?
Well, it looks to be. I thought the applicant would be here tonight to answer these questions, but they obviously do not look to have made...
You're using the color that's on the drawing?
Yes.
Do we have a... I forgot what the word is. Regarding various colors within the, in the master plan, does it state what the colors can and cannot be?
In... What is that?
In the overall plan for the city center, does it state what colors can and cannot be?
I am not familiar with if it does.
I don't remember it saying what it can and cannot be.
I think it's mainly focused on the materials.
Hypothetically, so one of the bricks were, if it was brick and it was yellow, it would be permissible, because it's brick.
I don't want...
I'm just asking, because brick is a permitted material.
I would question the character of a more extreme color than earth tone, in my personal opinion, but...
But does the, does the plan specify that, though?
Does the plan or does the master plan?
The master plan doesn't specify.
It doesn't specify.
It doesn't specify.
No.
So if it's, if it's brick and it's yellow brick, it's still technically permissible?
It's technically permissible, but I think under the guise of the planning commission consideration.
I got that part. I just wanted to...
Yeah, yeah. I just want to be careful that, you know, if there was something of that extreme, that it's, it could still be per the planning commission's consideration of something like that. I just spoke with one of the representatives of the applicant, and due to a personal family matter, he cannot attend, but he said that the colors are going to be gray and black.
Gray and black.
And red?
And red around the, the metal panels will be red, but the brick will be gray and black.
Sounds like there's no controversy about this.
Not unless there's any other concerns for the commissioners.
As I recall, our specific concerns related to the building materials and the percentage of building materials that would be out of compliance, and it looks like they've done more than necessary to rectify those concerns, so I personally have no others now that we've got clarification on the paint colors.
I move...
You are.
Do I move adoption of the proposal? What is correct?
We never approved the site plan because we had...
This is moving approval of the site plan.
Exactly.
Yes. And my name is Dennis Nordman.
Commissioner Disick will second this.
It's been moved in second to approve the site plan at 26600 Southfield Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
You skipped public comments.
There's not a public comment for this.
It was before.
Oh, public comments, section five.
Mines doesn't have that.
According to the planning commission's bylaws, there's only one public comment.
So he put it in new business. He put it under, he put it under it.
Yeah, the agenda you printed out has two public comments on it.
I understand that, but the bylaws state that there's only one public comment.
That's why people are confused.
I understand that, but the agenda was updated prior to the meeting and it was published online.
Very good.
There's a public comment section that comes once we get to new business.
After you vote?
For the...
Local public comment.
The Southfield 26600 Southfield Road site plan, which was tabled item from the prior meeting, has been motioned and seconded. So the question is still on table. Are we... All those who are in favor of this site plan, yea or nay? I'm waiting.
We voted aye.
We voted aye.
Yea.
Okay. So that means the site plan for 26600 Southfield Road has passed.
So just for clarification, there's no public comment before you vote on anything?
There's a public comment section. It's right here.
I don't have the agenda in front of me.
It's one up, right up there.
So again, answer the question, though, does that mean you're voting before there's a public comment, or is there...
We're voting on a table item from the prior meeting, yes. We haven't got to the public comment section on this agenda.
Public hearing will have public comments.
Yes.
Under new business.
Yeah. There's the comment section right there. I'm looking at it.
Still, the question for me is, why is public comment after new business?
Yeah, it appears it was moved from what I would say five to seven, looks like. I think it was just an agenda item when he laid up the agenda.
I understand why we're not having public comment again on something that was really up for last time, but why, does that apply to the public hearing on the zoning ordinance or not?
I would suggest that we have the public comment section moved from seven to six before we get into the public hearing.
The public hearing is for public comments.
The public hearing that's on the agenda is for the rezoning ordinance for the first floor for the building. The public comment is for anything.
Right.
That's my suggestion to the commissioners, to move the public comment section for this agenda to six, which will be coming up right now, before we address the public hearing.
So we already approved the agenda as written.
Well, generally, old business has our, that's why there was no public comment, so...
Right. Yeah, we said that.
But yes, you've already approved the agenda, so if you want to...
Now, I'm asking the commissioners, I'm asking right now, it's a suggestion, are you all willing to adjust the agenda to allow for the public comment to be before we do the public hearing? That's my question. And if the answer is no, I'm just going to go ahead and say new business so we can address the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move public comment from item seven to item six, swapping it with new business, which would move from six to seven. This is Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
All in support?
Disick.
Commissioner Nordman, second of that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing done. Now, we can have our general public comment section.
Are we still going to have a public comment after the new business?
That...
Sorry for speaking on a turn. I know we're moved it, but now...
We moved it to now.
Right. So before we talk about the new business?
Before we talk about the public hearing.
We can discuss new business during the public comment.
If it's regarding, let's put it this way.
I'm a first timer.
That's okay.
Long time listener, first time.
We have a public hearing for the first floor for the site plan for the school. That's coming up after we finish the public comment. Does that help?
We're on board.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
I'm Bruce Compass, 28050 Woodworth Way, Lakefield Village. I know we're coming up to the section that we're asking for a, where the public hearing is being held. Did we send out notifications to the residents of the public hearing?
Yes. It was published.
Where?
It was published.
It was published in the Oakland Press.
What about the newsletter that Mike Green emails out on a regular basis? Was it identified there?
I'm not aware if it was or was not.
It was not. This is a text amendment, so it needed to be published for...
It's what?
It's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so it's, notification is by publication in any local, the usual local, in the newspaper of note, because that's the Southfield sign.
Due to their publication schedule, it was not able to be getting, was not able to be published in time. It would have been less than 15 days prior to the public hearing, so we had to publish it in the Oakland Press.
But you had 18 days. That's inexorable.
They do not, they don't publish every week, and there was not enough time to have it run for 15 days prior, according to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, so we had to go with the Oakland Press.
It needs to be in a publication that is circulated within the subject area, which the Oakland Press would certainly comply with that. But why wasn't it in the newsletter, the e-newsletter? I'm not aware. There's no, that's not a publication requirement.
Well, it's the way that the city's been communicating with the residents lately.
I, I'm not aware of why it is not...
During public comment, people can address this. Everyone will have three minutes to speak.
So you're not bound to notify the affected residents within a certain parameter, planning commission?
It's posted, as he said.
And this is district-wide?
No, I mean a direct notification to the residents that live in the area.
This, this...
This is a public comment. We don't usually respond at all. We're just listening. We just listen.
No, you're, that's my point.
No, no, no.
Notification of public hearing typically goes to...
Let me make this clear. The commission is here. When we have a public comment section, we listen, we don't respond.
Oh, okay. Do you respond during the other portion?
If it's a public hearing, we listen. We do not respond.
If I may, Commissioner, just for this one question, to clarify regarding the notice provisions, this is a text amendment versus a, versus a district amendment, and in that case, the notifications that go out is publication and it is not, residences within 300 feet are not notified. This would apply to any, to this project, but this actually, as Austin stated, this applies district-wide, you're, so it will apply to numerous properties potentially. So that's why...
My comment would be that I think it was negligent on the planning commission not to notify the residents that are directly impacted by this. I think as a public body, you need to get the word out, and the word in the Oakland Press isn't any measure of satisfaction. You know, we're dealing with basically the largest project Lathford Village has ever put out, and the silence around this has just been deafening. I just can't imagine that we're moving forward on something that the residents really have no knowledge of, and they don't understand the magnitude of it. But I'll save my rest of my comments for later.
I'm just a simple resident. My name's Bruce. I've been here for 40 years. I don't really follow this stuff that much, but this one has my attention regarding this new apartment building. I've seen drawings of it that changes the entire fabric of what Lathford Village has been. So I just have some questions. I thought an open forum meant there was exchange of information back and forth. I don't know where I'm supposed to get my information from, and I can't even, you won't answer my questions. But let me just make some, express some concerns here. I'm assuming, it seems to be a very professional planning commission, that you've done your due diligence, that you're getting ready to recommend or make zoning changes of this magnitude within the city. So the first one is, I was wondering if I could, or the citizens could request a copy of your infrastructure reports on how our current infrastructure is and how it will support a building and apartment complex and a number of new residents, for example, the current water pressure issue in the city. It's to my, it came to my attention that the City of Southfield Fire Department came to the city over a year ago saying that there is not today, with the number of residents and housings that we have, enough water pressure to support it, and they're looking for ideas and solutions. They talked about putting in gates here that separate Lathford with Southfield to give them access to fire hydrants that do have enough pressure. I haven't heard anything about this since then, but what has the planning commission or the city doing or planning to fix the current infrastructure on the water pressure before we add another, I don't know, what is it, 300 residents? How many is supposed to accommodate in this new apartment complex? Number two, so if we could see a report on what the, what the current infrastructure is on water and how that's going to be enough to accommodate this new facility without adding, doing anything to fix the current water pressure issue, you know, I was wondering if you guys could share that. Same thing on the sewage capacity. Has, you've done your study and due diligence on the sewer capacity? And then the last one is the electrical capacity. And on these, let's say they have to put in a new substation, and let's say the developer is responsible for that, that cost, does the city have, will they have to assume any responsibility for maintaining it? And what, what would that kind of annual cost be? So I'm just, I'm just, as a, again, an ignorant citizen of Lathford, I'm just trying to get information to verify that you've done your due diligence on this before you make this kind of monumental decision. I've talked to some of the city council members, and the response I get is, "Well, we don't really own the, own the property, and there really isn't much we can do." Well, if you could rezone the property to accommodate residency on the first floor that this current zoning doesn't allow, well, then also you could rezone it so that it can't have anybody living here, or a combination thereof. So I would think, you know, and again, maybe I don't understand the zoning laws, but that kind of comes into mind.
It's been three minutes.
Say that again, please?
It's been three minutes.
Oh, so you want me to stop talking now?
You...
No.
There's three minutes permitted per person.
You know, this, this doesn't seem to be a way to accommodate the residents of the city, especially on an issue like this.
That is really rude. Just let him finish. Yeah, that's a question. Yeah, that's a question. Go, 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 do the address.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
I don't have notes. My name's Pete Truza. I live on Lathford Boulevard. I don't get much information from this, so a lot of it is from people that I care about and people that know my concern of the city. I've lived here for, going on 12 years. I put a sign out in my yard to make people aware of this, and I had around seven residents stop and ask me what it was about. Nobody knew anything about it. They were clueless, and I told them that they were looking to tear down the school and put up a apartment complex, low-income, I believe.
Low, middle income.
Middle income. I apologize. Again, I, I'm not reading off the notes, I'm going off of what some people are telling me, so I'm going, trying to explain to some people, saying, "Hey, that they're going to tear this down, and, you know, I know that the space is going to be taken out, and they're going to take the green space out, and they're going to go to the sidewalk, and it's going to, it's going to change what Southfield Road looks like." So everyone I spoke to, people that I've talked to and know, people I don't know, said, "That's not good." So as a resident, I would say the same thing. It's not good. I definitely don't want it. I don't know enough about it to say yea or nay, but knowing what I know now, it's definitely a nay. So that would be my two points. Is that over three minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I live on Glenwood. I live on Glenwood in Lathford Village. I was on planning commission for five years, and I know that you guys don't set the, you know, put the announcements in the paper or whatever, so I do question the sincerity of the city in asking for public input by putting it in Oakland Press, because most of us do not get the Oakland Press. The only other time I remember that being done is when they were trying to, I'll say, hide the capital improvement bond when our water bills were going up by 22 percent. I just want to make a, let you know that I think you're being asked to make decisions based on false information. Our master plan has not really been updated in 10 years with real resident input. Also, Attorney Kimberlin said that the two wings are required to be pushed up to the road per the city ordinance, but that is in contrast to the requirements of historic district commission. There is no city ordinance that requires buildings to be up there. That is a suggestion in the master plan, there are no ordinances. Let's see. There were questions about drains and grease and sediment, and Mr. Sernow explained that the lender will be picking all of these details apart because the lender has the property as collateral. I'm a... As a mortgage loan officer, the lender is not going to be picking apart the infrastructure system and grease traps and all those things. That's on the city. Also, there's a question about... This says about the, the planning commission may allow flexibility for building placement for historic buildings, provided that the development meets the intent of this district. I don't believe that this plan meets the intent of the district. And I'm also wondering if we are opening ourselves up for people legally living in the loft buildings. I know that we have had people residing in those buildings, but will this now make it legal for them to live in other buildings on the first floor? And that's it.
Good evening. My name is Roger Lynn. Been a resident of Lathrop Village for about 37 years. I really don't have a problem with having an apartment there. I think, you know, the school, we need something to have some income coming, income coming in. But I do have reservations about maybe the design of it. To me, it doesn't seem like it really fits Lathrop Village. And what I'm trying to get at is, I've been talking to city council numerous times about over in Berkeley, and maybe, you know, Justin is a little tired of, Jason's a little tired of hearing this, but over there on Coolidge Road, they have the loft apartments. And I realize, you know, we're not comparing apples to apples here, but we're still talking about a, a school that's been renovated, which we have, and what they did, how beautiful that looks and how that fits right into the neighborhood, and that's sort of like what we have too. We have a school in the neighborhood. You know, maybe there's some certain things that we can, we can do. It almost seems like we have the school and then the design, the architecture design is from another plan, and they just sort of superimposed it on the two ends of it. It doesn't seem like it to me, and I'm not an architect, but I, I know what I like when I see it. And to me, it's just not really giving me warm and fuzzies. Whereas when I go to Berkeley and I see what they've done with the lofts, you know, the Ivy Lofts, it's like, wow, that's really cool looking. I know we need, you know, I don't have a problem with an apartment complex there, but to me, it just not, seems like it's, doesn't have the harmony for our city. Take it for what it's worth, I guess.
Hi, my name is Autumn Susanis. I write the Village Voice newsletter and I admin the Facebook group. I hope you all visit, because we have the site plans there for people to see. I wish they were on the display right now so we could be looking at what we're talking about. I totally concur with Roger Lynn, who just spoke, that the proposed building, it's not cohesive with the look of Lathrop, with our historic district, which that historic commission, in fact vetoed their plans because it was encroaching on our historic building, and it's much too close to the road, so you lose our historic landmark for, you know, any kind of a landmark. You can't see it because there's two four-story tall, 50-foot, four-inch tall structures that are enormous and take up the entire block, all that four-point, whatever acreage, from edge to edge, from road to road, and including all the way back to the first loop of our, of our track back there. It's a lot. It's a lot of infrastructure demand, and it's a lot of change, and it's very modern. And, you know, we're entrusting you guys to protect us from things that don't belong here, that don't look out of place, to keep the characteristics of the look of our beautiful village, and it's got a wide-open vista as you drive down. And you guys are allowing this laundromat with this bright red center, looks like a movie theater to me, I don't love it. I don't know why we're allowing that kind of color, but, I mean, it's America, you can paint what you want, do what you want, but we have ordinances that protect us from predatory corporate investment, from, from garbage. You know, our ordinances are supposed to protect us from building materials that are subpar, from people putting something cheap up, you know, because they own it, because they can, because they have deep pockets, because they got federal money. We're supposed to be protected by our ordinances. Those are local laws, and those are supposed to be honored. And you guys, you're, you're, you know, entrusted with, with this care of our, of our city. And Roger said something else that I wanted to say, and I forget what it was, but like, the thing is, is tomorrow we're having a town hall. Residents dug deep and, and paid for the flyers and the room. We're renting the room full price, no discount. It's at 7:00 tomorrow. We are going to have a presentation of the, of the renderings that Sernow provided, and we're going to go through. There's 58 bedrooms on every floor. That's a lot. There's an enormous parking lot behind, 193 parking spaces. It's a ton. The traffic is going to change dramatically on Lathrop Boulevard, where I used to live. It's going to be amazing. 300-plus new residents, it's just, it's a lot. And you guys are, you guys are entrusted with, with this. And the historic commission seems to be being overridden, and it's worrisome. It's really worrisome, and you guys got to be more transparent. And you shouldn't send the inspector out like a, like a dog to go tear down a sign that only has to be up for a day, that we spent $100 on, and you guys sent him out after the sign was up for just a few hours. It's amazing, amazing. The city said they were going to improve transparency between residents and city hall, and it's been the opposite.
My name's Kathy Minnick. I've lived in Lathrop for 65 years. My mother lives on Lathrop Boulevard. I live on Wilshire. I actually Eldorado, at Wilshire. And we have a tremendous traffic problem already. I think everyone's well aware of that. I get a lot of cut-through on, on Eldorado. My mom gets a lot of cut-through on Lathrop. And it just seems like the comments that have been made are just going to increase that. Even when we have signs that say, no right turn, no left turn, you know, this, that, the other thing, they're not enforceable. The speed limit is not enforceable. Our police officers are actually overextended, I believe, in terms of being able to enforce things. And adding another 150, 200, 300 residents that are going to use the streets to get to 12 mile, or get to 11 mile, or get, get across Southfield. Now, we've added these two crosswalks now. Just the flow of traffic on Southfield alone is going to be disrupted by the two additional crosswalks. I'm, I'm concerned, frankly, for people trying to cross Southfield Road at those crosswalks. So just back to the point of infrastructure and making sure that we really consider the implications of this as we move forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Martinez, 28511 Lathrop Boulevard. I have similar concerns about the water pressure. I know that there's been comments that the water pressure might not be enough to put out fires in some areas of Lathrop, Lathrop Village, and our homes in the area very near to where these apartments would be. And we had a sprinkler system put in about three years ago, and the sprinkler guy said that Southfield and Lathrop Village are the worst water pressures in all of metro Detroit. And most people that he works on, he has to put in a special pump just to get the water pressure adequate to have a sprinkler system. So I'm very worried that that's going to be even worse with, you know, 156 more homes there.
Anyone else for a public comment?
I'm Barb Canez on Glenwood Boulevard, and I too have lived here. Kathy Minnick. I'm Barb Hes, from way back, for 60-plus years. And I would just like to see us keep and maintain a bedroom community. We've waited 30-plus years for something to be done with that school, and now you've pretty much kicked residents out of even the plan, the suggested opportunity to use the building. By putting in a first floor with more apartments, we have absolutely now no access to that building. And I thought at some point, at least to work with the city, that the residents who've waited forever and a day, that building is our center point. It's the centerpiece of this community. I can't imagine, in the middle of our community, it's an apartment. I thought we were building a downtown development, and now you're putting up an apartment that none of us can even use. At least if you consider a first floor that we have access to, coffee shops, meeting rooms, something, this would be more acceptable. But anyway, that's my comment, and I'm not a big fan of putting up these wings on both sides. I did have a, a look at the, the plan. I think building should be the focal point, not those wings. The building is lost in that drawing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a resident, Lauren Barris. We've been here 25 years, and I'm glad to see them finally, see you finally doing, and Sernow finally doing something with the building. From what I understand, Sernow owns the building, the city does not own the building, and so the city can't make plans for the building, and can't enforce how they use the building. But what I do know about Sernow is that they have revisited these plans over and over and over again. And what I heard them saying at the meetings that I go to is that they want to produce something that Lathrop Village can be proud of. They really do. And they keep going back. I think they just heard from the historic commission, and they tweaked the plans again. As I heard you say in the beginning of this meeting, they tweaked the plans to be compliant with the ordinances, which is important. So I don't see the controversy there. If they, if this doesn't go through, from what I understand, their other option is to level the building completely and build an apartment anyway. And what they're trying to do is do something nice for Lathrop Village by preserving part of that building. And I applaud that effort, and I'm glad to see it get done.
Excuse me. What are you, this woman's trying to trip me as I walk through the...
I just want to say something.
Please. Needs to be on the case.
I can't say this first.
You know, Sernow has held this city hostage for 30 years.
Could you please use the microphone so everybody can hear you, including people watching this video at home?
Sernow knows how to renovate an historical building. They've done one downtown, and their offices in Birmingham are in an old building. They know how to remodel that building. They're just, they've just held us hostage for 30 years, and they're still doing it again, and we're falling into their nose. That's all I just...
Anyone else for the public comment? With that, we'll move on in the agenda to the new business, which is the public hearing for the ordinance amendment for the first-floor residents. Want to give us a recap, Eric?
Yes, sir. So our next item for consideration is the proposed amendments to the Village Center District of the zoning ordinance. And within your packet, you should have the proposed language. It's to add for the use in the ground floor of buildings to allow for residential use, which currently residential uses are only permitted on second stories and above. So just to walk through briefly on how, how we've proposed to amend the ordinance by implementing the proposed residential on the ground floor. It starts with the section in the Village Center District that shows the table of all the different permitted uses within the district and the special land uses within the district. So towards the end of that table is the multifamily section, so the proposed amendment is to allow for multifamily on the, on the ground floor, subject to a notation below that that states that multifamily residential uses may be permitted on the ground floor of a building, subject to the review and approval by the planning commission and the standards of 3.1.8.0i. And that is a section towards the end of the Village Center District section, that we can go over those details towards the end here. Moving on to section 3.1.8.0D is the building placement. This is the section of the ordinance where it does, in fact, restrict buildings to the zero-foot building line, so there, there is a setback within the ordinance that requires buildings to be placed up to the street. The proposed amendment to this section, well, first, subsection A talks to the build-to-zone, and again, that's where the buildings are required to be up to the street, but it allows for some flexibility that the facade may include jogs up to five feet from the property line. Building entrances, it speaks to the specifics of that, in the sense that recessed areas are from three to five feet from the build-to-zone and shall be provided for many, or for primary building entrances. And so subsection C is the area where there's the amendment to add a subsection 2 to that. So in addition to the forecourts, where the intent of the forecourts is to provide for green space within the district, essentially what the, what the Village Center District is trying to achieve is for there to be amenity zones from the facade of the building to the curb, to the back of the curb along Southfield Road, for there to be pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-oriented zones and amenities within that area. So the forecourts will remain as is, to allow for greenery and softening of the hardscape in, in that area. And then we add subsection 2 to, for historic structures, which reads, "The planning commission may allow flexibility for buildings, for building placement for historic buildings and additions, provided that the development meets the intent of this district." And again, this is going back to the fact that all, all site plans within this district will require planning commission approval, so it'd be subject to the commission's focus on, on historic structures, per that section of the ordinance. Moving on to section 3.1.8.0E is the building elements. So the proposed change there falls under the, the base of the building. Buildings within the district are sectioned into three, three different tiers, the first being the base, the middle being the middle, and then the top, being the top of the building. So under the base, subsection 3 reads that multifamily residential buildings, when ground floor residential is permitted by the planning commission, there is no prescribed building frontage, except that building front should generally run parallel to the street. Facades facing public rights-of-way, parks, and plazas should contain windows proportionate to the building facade. So number one, and number two, just to cover those briefly, the arcade is geared more towards your mix, mix of uses such as retail and, and other commercial uses, that there's facades featuring a series of arches and columns. And then the storefront, also geared more towards retail and commercial uses. The front facade, build-to-line is at or near the edge of the right-of-way within the build-to-zone. The entrance to the building, which may be recessed, is at the grade of the sidewalk. So by adding subsection 3, this speaks to the concerns about the proximity of the two wings of the building, the proposed building being placed in front of the existing school, that this added section or amended section gives the planning commission consideration for those types of concerns, all, all the while, while still trying to achieve the general intent of the Village Center District, which is a more urban, walkable, pedestrian-friendly, hard, mix of hardscape and softscape environment along Southfield Road. So then moving on to the windows and doors, generally, subsection A is generally, speaks to the materials, the shutters, and the facade openings. Again, the way that the ordinance is currently written is to provide a focus more on your mixes of uses that are not residential. And so that's why it's, it was a challenge for ground floor residential to strictly, to strictly meet the requirements of the ordinance, because the, the types of materials, the transparency requirements, you know, the interface between the sidewalk and the inside of the building is geared more towards retail and non-residential as opposed to residential that's being proposed now. And then the simple amendment to that falls under subsection B, the ground floor windows and doors for arcade and storefront frontage types. The integral, integral design will remain the same, that all storefronts have doorways, windows, and signage that are integrally designed. But again, this is allowing for the ground floor residential to be a permitted use. But again, this is allowing for the ground floor residential to be a permitted use all the while while maintaining the intent of the, the district to allow for, I'm sorry, to encourage mixes of uses. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there is a significant change to subsection, or section 3.1.8. I, which is the first floor uses on primary streets. This is towards, or at the end of the amendment, and it states that the following regulations apply to all first floor uses. And it's proposed that retail and restaurant uses facing a primary street shall be at least 20 feet deep as measured from the street-facing facade. So this is a current requirement within the ordinance, but we propose adding that the Planning Commission may waive this requirement when, when it determines the following criteria are met. And there's four, four criteria. The first is A, the project involves the rehabilitation of a historic structure. B, the project satisfies a demonstrated need for housing in the city of Lathrop Village. C, the project includes passive or active open spaces such as parks, plazas, and/or event spaces for public use. And then lastly, D, the project is consistent with the city's master plan. And then under this section, number two states, in order to promote a walkable downtown area as described in the intent of this zoning district in the city's master plan, banks, financial institutions, professional, medical, administrative offices, and daycare centers shall not comprise more than 25% of the street-facing facade of the same side of a single block along a primary street. So those are the proposed changes within the Village Center District section of the zoning ordinance. What's been part of the discussion in the recent past is the realization of how difficult it is over the last many months or years for a developer to develop space for retail or anything that's not residential, and the difficulty with developing those and occupying those spaces. And so that's why the, the challenge as of right now is to wrestle with the Village Center District where, where there is a proposal to develop multifamily. And to, the challenge is to, to determine how to honor the ordinance as it exists, as bringing the buildings closer to the street. We recognize that there is a discrepancy or disagreement with the historic district. But that's, that's where we're at in terms of allowing for the multifamily residential on the ground floor, all the while while honoring the existing language of the, the Village Center District that requires buildings to be closer to the street. Happy to answer any questions. Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Just in terms of the way this is presented to us, it's not clear what the changes are, what's new and what's old. I, I see a lot of what has been presented is, is underlined here, but then this last paragraph that you read isn't underlined. So is, is there a mix of text here that's new and old that isn't readily apparent to the commission?
That's a good question, because mine's is, mine's highlighted in red, so I can see.
Might as well.
I don't have a hard copy.
The three of us are looking at this electronically and the font, the proposed change are in, is in red font for us. So perhaps if you didn't print it, it was probably...
Well, maybe Eric can answer that question.
Yeah, the intent is, I'm sorry, the intent is for the, the proposed changes, so the, what's before you is the actual ordinance as it exists today, and then what's in red is the proposed amendment.
Oh, he doesn't have it.
Okay, well, I, I'll pull it up here, but I, I didn't catch that when I was going through it on the computer and I printed out a copy and it's a little confusing.
I don't know.
It was published on...
The other thing that, if this, this applies just to the new, the new structures, not to the historic structure that's already there, right?
The, the language being proposed would apply to the entire Village Center District.
Yeah, the entire district, not any particular structures.
Sure. I don't, I don't have a question, but I would like to share my initial thoughts on this. I think in a vacuum, I, I don't mind what I see. What I'm struggling with philosophically, or perhaps politically, and I'm not a conservative person in general, but I'm feeling a little bit conservative here, is we're not considering this in a vacuum, we're considering this in the context of a proposed site plan. And I think I would prefer to not consider a revision to the rules because there is a proposal. That's just my kind of foundational, fundamental thinking on it. Now, I, I understand that we have, you have made an attempt to strike a compromise between what the developer has proposed and what is already printed and ratified, but I, I would like to say that I am, I'm at odds with something about this philosophically, the simple act of reconsidering the rules to, to bend them around something that's already been proposed.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that, Tim. My feeling about this is the master plan was developed with resident and business input something like 15 years ago. It does get reviewed by the Planning Commission, I think, every five years and updated, but it has been quite some time since there was any significant contribution from residents into the, any updates to the master plan. The master plan's supposed to be five to 10-year forward-looking, and obviously nobody's got a crystal ball. So do the best you can with the information you have and you kind of guess what you think five years, what the requirements will be, or what you want the district to look like. My feeling, and I don't, just based on my residency here over 20 years, is that the people that were involved in developing the master plan in the first place envisioned that they would, you know, create the district, set up ordinances that would encourage retail primarily and a walkable district and people, a place where people could hang out. Obviously, it allows for second and above-level residence, residential occupation, so there was a vision that included that as well. And that somebody would come and develop some project, but there hasn't, there's been limited investment in this district since the master plan was developed in the first place and even since it was updated since then. So this is like the first test of what the vision was of the people that put together the master plan. But like Tim said, you know, instead of trying to adjust the language in the ordinances in order to accommodate some desire of a specific project, it would have been really nice if five years ago, somebody said, hey, maybe we should allow first-floor occupancy of residential occupancy, because we think that maybe there will be a need for more housing in the city. And then somebody, you know, we update the ordinance to allow for that, and then somebody comes with a plan that takes advantage of that language. This is the opposite. And it doesn't sit right with me either philosophically. And I'm also, you know, thinking about something that Karen Miller mentioned in her public comments, does this create an opportunity for other buildings in the district to have first-floor occupancy? And of course, it would, the way it's written right now, with Planning Commission approval, if this language was in place, then any building that's in the Village Center District could be approved for first-floor residential occupancy. So is that a good thing or a bad thing? Does, does the city and the business owners in the city want that? Does it fit with the vision that the Planning Commission is trying to support for the city? I don't have an answer for it. I don't know one way or the other, but those are the questions that are floating around in my head.
I have some comments. I'm looking at this plan and the requested revisions. I don't see how first-floor residential fits into the vision for a city center at all. I've seen other apartment buildings in Southfield that have first-floor residential, and that's completely useless to non-residents of that particular domain. And I don't think closing off 50-some units of space for people who are non-renters of that facility benefits anybody that lives behind or on the other side of Southfield, especially in that district itself. And I think it would be important to go back and revisit restaurants, WeWork, whatever, whatever the concept is for filling that first floor, those should be units that are available for the retail purposes of the city center.
Going off Mark's comments there, the proposed intent for the existing school that's going to be rehabilitated is for it to have space that is rentable, rooms that are rentable to residents, space that is rentable for, the basketball court's going to be preserved, it's also going to be made, so it's multi-use, you can play pickleball there, you can rent it out for a hall for events. And there is also, there is a commitment from Bamboo, which is a co-working space, to create a co-working space in the existing school.
I see those walls being built around as residential, though, as kind of fencing that facility off. I would like to see both of those wings itself, if they're proposed as, you know, that, as they're drawn, that those spaces as well not be first-floor residential, because that is just not walkable. It's somebody's home that you're walking next to. It's not something that's, you know, public space, in our public space.
Yeah. I, I did, much to my surprise, apparently make a lot of input into the last five-year review. I didn't realize that until I read the plan getting, getting ready for the commission, and I found my own language there. So yes, there was a review in the last five years, and yes, we had opportunity to participate, and apparently I did. Documentation all over there. But I didn't really understand what I was reading in relation, and this, this plan, this proposed plan really helped me to understand this language about this downtown district. So I, I was a little shocked about the possibility of, of residents up close to Southfield Road. And I expressed that at the last meeting myself. I'm still not real clear about that. On the other hand, I think it's, I'm, I'm, I have the impression that maybe the market has changed and that we have a surplus of, of restaurant space in the area. I'm not, not sure about that, but it seems to me that the real shortage right now is housing, not restaurant space. I could be wrong. So I wanted to work residentially, I want the size issue to be resolved. I'm not happy about the size, and I'm not real happy about how it interfaces with the school. But it seems to me that we also have to recognize that if we want the school to be preserved and, and the investment to flow into the school as a part of the project, it has to work financially and there has to be provision for actually addressing the market. I would love for it to, to be three stories instead of four, certainly not five, as I, my first impression was, apparently in some old document, it says five floors. Because that, that, I, I also had that impression, but, so there are, there are issues here that I'm concerned about, but I don't see how this works going forward without residents on the main floor, without it being rentable for that, provided that we don't have this notion of, of it being up close to the freeway. And I, I want to, I'm, I'm, I want to come to the hearing tomorrow or the, the town hall, meaning to see the revised plans in that regard. The, this proposal does have a way of focusing our thinking on, on, on the language, previous language in the plan, which is calling for some things that may not make sense to us right now. So I'm having the same problem that some of you are resolving this mentally.
One thing I will state is about turning the first floor of this proposed building into retail space is that there is still empty retail space up and down Southfield Road. So to create even more retail space doesn't even make, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense if you don't have demand for the existing retail space, so.
So...
WeWork, I think, is, you know, or something like that, a shared space, which Austin said they're consider, there's a commitment to do some of that in the schoolhouse part of it, is maybe that could be expanded, but that's just one use.
I think one of the things that they, a lot of cities struggle with is figuring out how to prevent that kind of barricade to public access around buildings, right? And so with bigger buildings, they create atriums, you know? So even if it's not a rental space, it's still a sightline that, in an open space, where people can move through and flow. When it's walled off like that and it's somebody's house, and I, I just, I struggle with having that first-floor residential right there in our downtown district, as opposed to having it, you know, up on stilts even, you know? Give us 11 feet up, a frontage, so that there can be airflow light, people passing through, you know, it's, rather than just a monolith.
That, that's another potential use for that space, is just have nothing there, just there, right?
If you can't rent it, okay, then don't build it out, go up. Something has to be aesthetically done about, you know, that, that area.
Sure. And I'm not proposing a site plan, so I'm thinking for myself, but as an alternative to empty space, for example, some of the proposed public spaces that would inhabit the existing school structure could also inhabit the space along Southfield Road. So these rooms for public meeting, gymnasium type...
Pickleball, you name it.
Sure. I do think Surnau has been creative in their envisioning of those types of spaces in the existing school structure. Could it be a compromise for them to include those elsewhere to be consistent with what our language is already acquiring?
But how do you, we, we have a responsibility to not get into design, as a planning commission, to design people's projects for them.
Sure.
We have to respond to their, their thinking in regard to rules we've already put into place. And now that brings up the issue of changing the rules, I understand. But the other thing is, we can't say, build us club, club space for the community, and by the way, you, you don't get to build enough rentable space to support it. I mean, the business plan has to support the project. The, if, if, I, I can think of other ways of making the business plan work, but I, I, we might want to take off the top floor rather than the bottom floor. That would be less dwarfing of the, of the school. And maybe there's some other way of making the business plan work besides having the mass that they're proposing. But, but we, we do have to look at the livability and the rentability of that first-floor space.
Yeah, absolutely true.
I understand, this isn't downtown Birmingham where people walk right next to the building. It seems, I mean, that doesn't really work for, usually buildings in, in sort of down, semi-downtown areas like Royal Oak, you've got, you've got a berm, you've got some gardening out front, you've got, got some vegetation besides a couple trees every 50 feet along the freeway, freeway, freeway extension.
I mean, in Royal Oak, the residential apartment buildings, they're much higher, right? But they all have retail on the first floor.
Well, I'm thinking down toward the 696 they don't.
But there's, there's no retail down there. It's because those are, those are townhouses. Like maybe a townhouse complex would be better than an apartment complex in that case. It's slightly different. I'm thinking about the ones at 11 Mile and Main Street, that, you know, they're apartment buildings, but then they have first-floor retail. But again, you know, the problem is, we've got empty retail spaces already. So, but I think that, to your point, Dennis is really well-made, that it's got to make business sense to the property owner, otherwise, why would they invest in it at all? So I think we can make an assumption that... So I think we can make an assumption that what they have proposed provides them enough rental units in order to meet what they think they need to generate in terms of rent, in order to make the project make financial sense.
They are investing in the school.
Yes, they're not raising the school, they're investing in renovating it and turning it, parts of it into shared spaces, and as Austin mentioned, though, that parts of it would be reworked, parts of it would be basketball court that could be rented out for various purposes, other things like that. So it seems like there is an intention to make this, parts of the schoolhouse available for public use.
I think several of us have raised concern about how, how livable is this space on the ground floor going to be? On the other hand, I also am concerned on the other side, making it into empty store space. That doesn't help us at all.
Correct.
Any more discussion? Because at some point, we have to open it up for a public hearing.
I have nothing else, nothing else to add right now.
No more discussion?
Good.
I will say, before we open it for public hearing, I know people have a lot of strong feelings about this project. I want to assure you that this commission has neither approved a site plan, nor have we approved any change to the zoning ordinance. So I, I know that emotions are high, and it's easy to draw foregone conclusions that this commission has already made up its mind and intends to steam through a process. But this is my fifth meeting. Since being on this planning commission, we've approved two site plans, both of which we sent the business owner back to the table to address the items for which they were out of compliance. One had, one related to parking, and some of you saw a bit of another concern earlier today related to construction materials. So I would ask, in spite of your strong feelings about that, to be considerate, that we have not approved anything, neither a zoning ordinance nor a site plan. So I, it will be easier for me personally to take in and consider public feedback that is delivered in a way that hasn't drawn the foregone conclusion that we've already made up our mind. So that would be my ask. I genuinely feel that this body is open-minded and, open-minded and very interested to hear public input, so.
Absolutely.
That's it? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing for the zoning ordinance. Anyone that wants to come regarding zoning ordinance? Same three minutes, same.
No, that won't even be that long, thanks. I, I like your comments on what you said, and to kind of, again, Pete Truza, Lathrop Boulevard, to, to go along, transparency is so important, you know, if the residents want to know and should know what's going on in our community, for what I have experienced and as involved as I am in the community, which many people know who I am, it's not transparent. It comes to me because people know who I am, not because I see it, you know, it's brought to me. The only way that we can really get the right story out is to be upfront and honest about it and show it. And whether we agree or disagree and say, is this good for the community, is it good for the city, is it good for our home value, that's, that's the main concern, you know, do we want to keep it looking like Lathrop Village, or do we want to keep it looking like a community that we're not proud of? So thank you for your comments, and I definitely share your worry as far as, you know, the decisions already made. So thank you for thinking this over, the committee and this group, and I know we've got a lot of residents that care about this and want to do what's best for the community. So thank you all, and I appreciate your consideration.
Karen Miller again, and I do believe the reason we are all here is because we did hear about it, not necessarily from the city, not from the Oakland Press, which, I don't know who gets the Oakland Press, but I would really appreciate it if more could be mentioned on the website, the newsletter, that's where we get our information, and we trust our information that we get from the city. That's important to us. We're here not because we want to change your mind, or we want you just to know how we feel, how your residents feel, how your taxpayers feel, we're just here to give you our input. And we know you're all sensible people, we know you live here too, and we know you want the best for the community as well. So that's the whole reason for here, we're here. Mostly, most importantly, communication, please communicate better with the, the residents. This is, this, we're here because we're a little bit upset because we're finding out about these things at the 11th hour. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Hillman, I totally agree with you. That was one of my concerns when I was on planning commission, was that we were reactive rather than proactive, and it seems that this specific ordinance is being written for Sarnow for this project. I'm also concerned that you're taking away the power of the Historic District Commission. We only have three historic buildings, this building, the school, and the church, that's it. And so this ordinance pretty much takes away the power of the Historic District Commission. And I think before changing any ordinances, there are some steps that have been missed in this process so far, working with Sarnow and the Historic District Commission. There are some things that did not happen that should have before they were going for an appeal. So I would urge you to really consider this and the impact that it's going to have on, you know, the entire community, not just on this one building. Thank you.
I was on the planning commission too, so I know what it's like to be, you know, looked at, have, is you're against this, or you're for it, and you haven't done anything. Yeah, I was on the, when we put down the master plan the first two times, I was there, contributed, and there is nowhere in that master plan, or anyone that attended it, says we need large apartment buildings to make Lathrop great. It's just not something that Lathrop needs. And now we have a developer who, I don't know how you guys redid the ordinances, but you're basically doing it for this development, and you guys have addressed that concern you have. It's just, it's just, it's just a bad deal. Property values, traffic, infrastructure, these are all things that are going to be impacted by this development. There's no question about that. And as far as historic building, any Lathrop can't tear it down unless the Historic District Commission says so. So we're not losing that structure, it's protected because it's a federal historic building. They did allow for the weeks to be taken off, but that's always been thought as a possibility anyway. Blacktop, it's unbelievable how much traffic will be generated. We do not need additional residents in Lathrop. We are, we are a bedroom communit, community, we're happy with that. And, you know, a traffic light, even going out there now, if you have two or three cars in line, you barely make it. And I can only imagine the chaos in the morning, driving people through the streets to get away from that light, traffic all hours of the day from that apartment complex. We don't need an apartment complex. I know when they initially put their plans together, they had 250, now they're down to 130 or something like that. Well, if the business plan would only accommodate for 250, how are they doing 132? I mean, it's just, they're flexible, they want to develop, but this is not a good development, and the zoning change is just, you know, would just be, not the zoning, the ordinance change would just be inappropriate for the residents of Lathrop. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for the public hearing regarding the zoning ordinance amendment?
I realize, Autumn, again, I realize this is probably out of your purview, but in terms of the threat of them demolishing the building, if, if we don't permit this, first-floor residences, ordinance change, and they decide, well, it's not worth doing, I don't think they can tear that building down in any kind of affordable manner, because asbestos, the asbestos, the federal asbestos remediation and removal laws that were codified in 1986, I believe, they were able to tear down the town hall with its clock tower across the street, that was our other beautiful historic building that we lost. They did that before the asbestos law was signed into, into law. And I don't hear them talking about the asbestos, not in the remediation, not in this, not in any way, it's not being mentioned, and that is a serious, serious hazard, toxic hazard, that will be introduced into our air, into our ground, into our water, if they do any kind of, you know, work on that building. So I'm concerned about that, that I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing it, I'm not hearing any kind of plans. I see, you know, they're figuring out how to, how to plant trees and the new, that's great, we need trees, but they're, they're, you know, hardscaping the whole thing, and they're not talking about protecting us, so I don't like that. And I think that's a serious consideration. The other thing I just want to say is, they've been leaving it vacant for 10 years because I believe it's been a tax write-off that whole time, and I can't prove it, I've been trying, I'm, I'm not a, a real investigative journalist, I'm just a citizen trying to find documentation. I think they've been getting a tax write-off, and now there's money available with MISTDA that they want to utilize. They're not, I don't think, putting any of their own money into this, honestly. When you say they're investing in this, I don't know if that's true, it seems like they're using all federal money. I would, I would like to understand what they mean when they say they want Lathrop to contribute financially to this project too, since it is supposedly their private property, and they can do supposedly what they want. What amount of money are we being asked? And also, could we please get a very clear understanding of where in the ordinance it says that they have, that it says in our ordinances that we have to build new buildings right to the street, because Panera certainly wasn't, and that's a new build, and so that must be not ordinance compliant, I don't remember any variance for that. But like, where in the ordinance does it say? Because we've been combing through, me, Karen Miller, we've been looking for the ordinance that says it has to be, and what we found is that the master plan says, very clearly, literally says, that the master plan is a recommendation and not rule. It's not, it's not the new rule of law, it is a recommendation for a way forward to make a more walkable city. And until we fix the 45 mile per hour traffic on, on Southfield, no matter how many signs and crosswarks we've got, even with traffic lights, it is too dangerous to cross safely, you know, those, those hawk signals are $300,000 a piece, and we got some for free, I guess, and we're expected to pay for some, and it is not a safe road to cross. And there is hardscape solutions other cities have followed that actually slow traffic, Klaassen is a good example. And I think, in fact, Giffords Webster is part of Klaassen's planning, and, and they narrowed a little bit, and they changed a little bit, and they provided for a safe crossing in some ways, some islands in the center, which we're not getting, and these are, okay, anyway, I, I thank you, Mr. Hillman, for your comments, I, I, that was very comforting to hear that you have not totally made up your mind yet, so, thank you.
Once again, are there any other comments to the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment? With that, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll put it to the council, I mean, the commission, for a vote regarding the zoning ordinance amendment, understanding that we did have this discussion last month, that's why it's on the agenda, so, we asked for this to be here.
We did.
Contemplating making a motion that might, might change the name of the game a little bit, but I, I move that we table the discussion about these amendments until we see further revisions and communication with the Sarnow company.
That's his motion. Nobody seconded it.
Great.
All right, I support it.
The move, then support it. All those in favor?
Nay.
To table, to table this until we get more information. That's what we gotta write.
Right.
All those in favor?
Nay.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Oppose.
Opposed was Hillman and Hammond?
Yep.
That's right.
So we're tabling, because I'm a I.
Okay.
So we're just going to table it until we get more information from Sarnow. That's the motion that passed. I think, since this is, we'll move on, before we get to general communication, as a commission, I just think we need to make sure we all understand, we've met with Sarnow a number of times as a commission, we reviewed a number of plans, we gave them a lot of input, and we asked for this. So at some point, I'm not sure how we'll get back to Sarnow to let them know that what we asked them to do, we have now tabled it. I'll leave that to Austin, since you talked to the applicant.
Specifically, what information are you looking for?
Well, I think we've heard from the public now about this, and.
But we, we still have to tell them what we're looking for.
I think we should take into consideration the concerns about first-floor residential in the downtown district. I'd say that we have other ideas about that, we're concerned about how close it is to Southfield Road, we're concerned that it's residential in the first place, and we're also concerned about traffic implications, we're concerned about infrastructure implications, certainly water was brought up, water and traffic, what's the plan for that? You know, we'd like to hear more studies about that and how it will affect our infrastructure in our city.
So we want the engineering studies, is what you're asking for? You want Sarnow to provide the planning commission with all of their engineering studies and anything that goes into construction?
Mr. Chair.
No, 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 this is just a question for me, I just want to understand.
You know, I'd like to see what the traffic would look like going in there, where would overflow parking be?
Okay.
I think there's a number, I think there's a number of shortcomings with the plan as proposed.
With respect, the issue on the table that we're asking them to go back and get more information about is the zoning ordinance amendment, not the site plan. All the things that you're asking for are appropriate to ask by the looks of to a site plan. And I think they're important too, but this is not the time to ask for them. We need to provide guidance to, to, to our, our planning partner, Giffords Webster, on adjustments we might want to see to the proposed zoning ordinances that were put in front of us.
Yeah. Okay.
That, that's what the issue is.
That's what I was trying to make sure I was understanding.
How would you resolve that? What would?
I don't have a resolution for it, I mean, I, I feel like, I, what I'm hearing from the public comment about this ordinance is that people who thought it was important enough to show up for this meeting don't think first-floor residential is appropriate for this district.
Mm-hmm.
So that's influencing my thinking about this ordinance. And I also still have the concerns that I voiced before the public hearing was opened about the language opening up the possibility of first-floor residential occupation in other buildings inside the district.
I have those concerns as well. So if we could back, if we go backwards now and make a different motion, you know, to just not approve these amendments as written.
Well, I, what I would recommend personally is that we provide some guidance to Eric for Giffords Webster to come back with adjusted language.
In the, in the ordinance.
I don't see how, what language there can be with a, that is.
That guidance is also important.
I don't, I don't see how there's any congruent language that we could propose to address the concerns about first-floor residential in this district. I don't, I don't see how we would come up with that plan with this, maybe there is a way, but.
Well, I guess, you know, for, for this meeting particularly, it would be good for me to know, is, is there, is ground floor residential an either-or, is it all or nothing, or is the commission willing to entertain certain percentages and re-looking at, like you were stating earlier, Commissioner Dizik, that you'd like to see more transparency, whether that be an atrium or actually engaged space as a retail space? You know, right now, as the ordinance is written, that has to be the bulk and the majority of the, the lineal frontage along Southfield Road. By proposing the amendments that are on the table, just kind of providing or allowing for a blanket allowance for multifamily residential up to 100% on the ground floor. to 100% on the ground floor, would the commission be open to entertaining a certain percentage? I guess would be at least my starting point for making a reconsideration and working with the applicant.
What confuses me about, about this is, we've got like, different visions butting up against each other in the language of, of the plans and ordinances, and one is the vision of something like downtown Birmingham and pavement out to the street and all of that, and, and then there's the opportunity to shove things back and, but, but seemingly we're requiring pavement up to the, practically up to the windows, and I'm, I'm just confused as to what, what we're really asking, and are we asking the developer to square the circle here, things that don't make sense on paper? I think, I, I, I don't understand.
Initially, we were asked as a commission to amend the ordinance to allow for first floor residence.
Excuse me, I'm not very.
Amend, amend the, amend the ordinance for first floor residential.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we were asked.
Yeah.
And then, we had commented to the applicant regarding our concerns, but we did say, and directed Giffords to put together an amendment to modify the ordinance for first floor, to allow for, assuming there was an approved site plan. Now, of course, if there's no site plan, then nothing ever happened, but that's what we were asked. We were asked to amend the ordinance to allow for first floor, and that's what they came back with. And then we were asked to put up a public hearing for that ordinance, and that's what we did for today. And then today was to hear comments regarding the ordinance itself, and then to vote if we were going to adopt the ordinance or not adopt the ordinance. Now, the vote was to table the ordinance and get back with Sarno, which is fine, but at some point, there's going to be some, in coming back, there's going to either be another ordinance to address, or the same ordinance to address. We're just kicking the can down the street, basically. So, at some point, we're going to tell Eric something if we want to say, well, we're willing to entertain residents on the first floor, but it can only be 60%, 40%, 30%, as he said, give him a starting point. But we had addressed at prior meetings that we know that the Village Center, the way the master plan is written, the first floor is supposed to be retail space. We acknowledge that retail space is not going to be filled, so we kind of say it, we know you can't fill up the retail space, they said the project makes sense financially if we can put units on the first floor, we said you can't do that, they said, is there a way we can get it done? Eric offered the opportunity for us to modify the ordinance, here we sit today. Now, to me, what we're discussing is that we're all backing up what we said. We've met with them, we've had this discussion, and we agreed when Sarno was sitting right there, to allow first floor residential. The ordinance allows for what we discussed before, but now we're saying, you know, I'm not saying I'm political or not, I really don't care about politics, but at the end of the day, we agree to this. And now that we're hearing other comments, we're not saying, we're not following up with what we said we were going to do. Well, I. That's all. So that's what this is about.
I'm sympathetic to the first floor adjustment. I, I, I just haven't worked out in my own mind how this relates to these other references to hardscape and having sidewalks that seem to be very close to the building, all of that, so I.
But that's part of the site plan.
Well, it's also part of the ordinances, because the ordinances require you to build.
Well, but, but the master plan already specified.
Yes, it does.
I mean, it specifies based on new development that is supposed to be built to the lot line, and we recognize that, and so did the applicant. But the applicant came back and said, the project, as they saw it, in order to make the project feasible, they asked for residential on the first floor. At first, it was about having access for seniors and so forth and so on, but at the end of the day, it was more about making the project viable. So we had that discussion, and we kind of agreed that, yeah, that would make the project more viable, but the ordinance didn't allow for that. So then we sent Eric on a mission to see how he could modify or suggest modifications to the ordinance to allow for first floor. That's what they came back with, and that's what we were really discussing here. I think we got off on a tangent when it relates to the site plan and all the other stuff, but at the end of the day, this is about what we asked, which was, if this project takes place, would we allow the ordinance to be modified to have first floor residential? And that's what they came back with. But we just voted to table it. So, we're sending Eric on another mission, I guess the question is, is what is that mission we're sending him on? And it's fair to Eric to ask, what am I supposed to be going back to Sarno to ask about, or what are we sending Eric to modify? I think if anything you want to modify, how we can make sure that this does not allow for any building to put residence on the first floor. Does it state it's only going to be in a certain diam, space, or is it in a certain area, or, you know, something like that, so that we know it's going to be confined to a space? So, you know, you're not looking at the, the footplace down there, decide they want to change the first floor to residential and put that up. It's just, I think, clarification of how do we can kind of narrow the scope. If you want to do it in a percentage basis, that's something else we could, you know.
Well, we have a simple sentence here. 1D, under section 3, paved areas, all areas located between the building and the street shall be paved for pedestrians unless specific landscape areas within the paved sections are approved. That doesn't make any sense to me. We have ditches out front, we have a big berm, and you want that all paved, with little cutouts for plantings?
It's an interesting thing, because that's, that's what the current ordinance says. But, as I stated earlier, there hasn't really been investment in new development in the Village Center District, as long as we've had a master plan. Nothing of significance other than the Panera, which was a planned unit development, which the planned unit development process allows you to go outside of the confines of the ordinance, so it's kind of an anomaly, it's like, not a comparable. But other than that, we haven't really had. So this is the first test, from my perspective, this is the first test of the ordinances that were developed in response to the master plan, and the, the master plan that led to the definition of the Village Center District. So now we're kind of seeing some of the.
The results of what came from that development and that plan.
Yeah.
But, we have voted to table it. We just need to give them some direction of what we're asking them to come back with.
I, I've seen proposals by architects that provide like a cross-section street scape, and I've had those developed for my own agency. Can you give us some, what, what the alternatives might be in terms of that cross-section? Because right here, I've seen pavement and cutouts for plants, and that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Yes, and that's the challenge that we were faced with, is the diagrams that are listed within the ordinance currently, it talks about or illustrates the different pedestrian zones, the amenity zones. There's three separate ones, the first one right up against the building, the second one for the pedestrian travel, and then there's a third one that shows where the amenities like benches and trash receptacles and that sort of thing would be placed. And so while that's pretty clear as it relates to multi-uses, so commercial multi-uses on the first level, it became a challenge, working with the proposed amendment, and how that interaction of those, of that three-tiered, the three-tiered zone would function with multifamily or a residential use on the ground level, as it was stated earlier in the discussion, that it's as if the public sidewalk is walking past your house. And we recognize that, and then that's a challenge dimensionally speaking, so how do you most appropriately propose an amendment that would address that concern, which is a valid concern, especially on a busy thoroughfare like Southfield Road?
So the building is basically an H shape, right? So, if on the exterior facades, so north, south, and facing Southfield Road, there were no residential units, but all of that were contained inside the H in the back by the parking lot. So let's say you would have eight to 10 units inside, facing the parking lot, but no, no residential units facing public spaces. You know, is that something that we could consider? You know, we would be willing to say that you could have some first floor there, as long as it's not in our public, with a, you know, directly butting our public space.
Right. And I, I hear what you're saying, and we would just need to be mindful and careful that we're not designing the project, you know, going forward. But with, with, with what you're getting at, the idea behind it, it is something that we would certainly be able to have conversation about.
And so, I think that would also limit any other building that doesn't have rear parking from developing on any, you know, on Southfield Road facing, or north, north and south streets where we have sidewalks, you know, putting any residential there.
There's rear parking all down.
Right. Oh, there's rear parking down 12.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This is definitely part of the problem, isn't it?
Yeah.
So you build out into the parking lots that are, we have limited parking in the city as it is, and now you're capitalizing that.
So I guess that's, that's part of it, how do we get specific about this project?
Well, yeah, and so that, that last section with the amendment 3.1.8I, that talks about the primary streets, obviously being Southfield in this case, says the following regulations apply to all first floor uses, but that the planning commission may waive the requirement when it deems appropriate. And it takes into consideration the involvement of rehabilitation of a historic structure, the project satisfies, demonstrates the need for housing, takes into consideration parks, plazas, and open space, and is consistent with the city's master plan. So I think that was the idea kind of behind it, was recognizing and realizing that there is going to be challenges with dimensions and context with this proposed building, and to put it on the planning commission's ability to take, to make the consideration for what, what is being proposed by the applicant. Because otherwise, i- it acts as, as if it's a waiver, because otherwise you would revert to what the ordinance currently says and what won't change, and that's the mixture of uses that would then be required to be up against the street at the zero foot lot line. So, the intention of the amendments that were drafted was to recognize the conversation that we're having in hopes that we would have some sort of direction right off the bat, but it sounds as though it's, we're not quite there yet, and we just need to massage kind of the, the details to address the concerns that are heard by the residents and the planning commission, so.
Something else to consider in rewording or coming up with a proposal for this ordinance, apart from just limiting like the percentage of the first floor that could be occupied as residential, is defining some distant setback from the road where residential could begin, right? Because then, in front of that, closer to the Southfield Road, you could have other uses. Do you follow what I mean?
Are you saying like on the front part of the building, it would be another type of use than residential, but on the backside could be residential?
Potentially. Or, you just don't, you, if you're going to have residential occupancy on the first floor, then the building can't come to the build, to, to line. That way, it's forced to be set back from Southfield Road. I'm not sure if it's practical or not, it's just an idea.
We'll look at it, yeah.
We have a huge amount of land all over the city, that's like between the sidewalk and the street, and then we have businesses like the last business strip, the last block on Southfield to the right, I mean, you go like, it's all parking right to about this, this far away from the street, and not even room for, for a tree or a bush. And we, we need to make this attractive, one way or another. It should be attractive in terms of landscaping. It can't literally be concrete to the street, from the building to the street. And so, our, if we're going to have residential there, we can't have windows that look out on concrete. So, I, I need to visualize how this is an attractive living space as well, it's a public space, and there is so much space there, it seems to me that we could do that. We could have spaces further out that are public, and spaces closer in that are ornamental grass and very attractive, and present a little bit of privacy.
Yes, and that's a really good point to make, I think, because as I was stating in the ordinance, it, it clearly gives the 14-foot amenity zone, or the pedestrian zone, from the face of the building at or close to the zero foot setback to the street. And within that 14 feet, that 14 feet is designated as guidelines for, for what that, for what those zones combined would be like, from a design standpoint. And so, while that may be clear the way that the ordinance is written for a mix of commercial uses, the challenge became, how, how would that look? What would those dimensions be if residential was allowed on the first floor? Because it totally changes the context of what the intent is. The intent of the Village Center District as written is to bring development closer to the street so that it engages a more village-centered district for walkability and focus on the pedestrian. But when you change that context to allow for residential on the ground floor, it, it changes everything. And so, your point is, is clearly understood, in whatever is proposed going forward, we need to see what those, the cut diagrams and the, the, those zones would look like, especially if we do make a proposed amendment to say that if you are going to propose residential on the first floor, it has to be a minimum setback of X, five feet, 10 feet, or whatever the case may be. So then how would we change that 14-foot zone, which is intended as a village-center amenity, to interact with multifamily uses or residential uses?
You don't feel that your language does that at this point?
It was, it was intended to provide direction towards that, but we may need to reconsider and look at how we can tighten up those loose ends, and take into consideration everything that was discussed, both with the community and the commission today. So, and we'll be working with Austin before we meet again, so that way, we're all on the same page, and when we discuss the amendments again, that it's essentially what was anticipated that we would be doing before the next meeting.
So Austin, once Eric comes back with modifications, because the items have been tabled, we would have to meet to review that, and then have a, impose another public hearing for it, correct?
Yes, we would be posting another public hearing, public notice.
So that would mean that the public hearing would probably be in March?
Uh, no, it would be in, well, it depends on the publication of Southfield Sun or Local Press, it doesn't publish every week. So as long as it can be published within 15 days out from the meeting, we should be able to have it on February's agenda.
So that would mean Eric would have to get something revised pretty quick, and he could have to send that out in order to hit this time for him, if not, it will be in March.
Yes.
Which of course goes squarely against the conversation that we had as a commission with this applicant, about trying to continue to help move the process forward. So is the goal to have it in February, we're going to shoot for February?
Shoot for February, and if we can't, then it'll be on the March agenda.
So Eric, there's the challenge for Giffords, which is basically to get the modifications in as fast as possible, in order for him to hit the timeline, in order for it to be in the meeting of February.
Yeah, we'll do what we can, and we'll coordinate with Austin and his team.
And we can publish the public notice before the language has been finalized, that's something I could be doing, I could get done later this week, and have sent to one local newspaper, so it's published, and then the language can be finalized and presented at the public hearing.
Okay. It still puts pressure on Eric.
But can't we put, meet the legal requirement by publishing it in a newspaper, but meet the community need by publishing it in our newsletter?
We can do that as well.
Yeah, simultaneous.
Mm-hmm.
And on the mobile app, which we look at the website?
On the website? We could.
Because the mobile app puts push notifications of things like this, so you could.
Yeah, on Thrill Share, we could send it out through there, yeah.
So that's, that's our plan going forward?
Okay.
All right. Everyone satisfied with the go-forward? Is everyone satisfied with the go-forward plan from the commission?
Good with it? Yes?
Okay. Well, now we're on general communication.
One of the items we discussed, you know, last meeting and the meeting prior, was about members of the commission abstaining from votes. And we did have our...
DT Director Coulson, the updates on the status of the progress that are currently in...
I don't even know what I've done here.
Please, the process.
Sorry.
Ted, adjourn.
Motion by... Oh, my gosh, I do not know what is going on here. Sorry about that. Hit some auto feature.
Well, see, she hit the adjourn already.
I started reading the agenda.
But the, there were some questions regarding when can a member abstain and when must they vote? And the only time that a commission member can abstain is if there is a conflict of interest with the project or the applicant who is presenting the project. It is expected of public bodies to vote. That is why you all volunteered and why you're all here. So we did get analysis from Leanne that, according to local ordinance and state law members, must vote unless there is a conflict of interest.
Got you.
Now, on to our site development status. 26780 Southfield Road, 44 Burrito. They are updating their plans for outdoor patio area. Afton has indicated that they would like to present it before spring, so I plan to reach out to them and get an update on that. 27300 Southfield Road. Planning commission provided zoning interpretation on the lower mound use. The interior and exterior work has been completed for that unit of the building next door to the south of us. And the property owner is currently in the process of selecting tenants for the other units. They're going to be whiteboxed and then rented out. 27601 Southfield Road, construction complete and business is open. Equin has ordered outdoor furniture, the Panera across the street. They're waiting for the outdoor furniture and amenities to arrive, and then they'll be installed. 26600 Southfield Road. That was the site plan we reviewed earlier today, which required the updated elevations, and that has been approved. 27700 Southfield Road is the property to the north, the high school, and is working its way through the site plan review process. 28317 Southfield Road. That was the golf simulator site plan that you all approved. And they are currently in the process of installing the equipment for the golf simulators at this time. And that's all I have for this meeting, Chairman.
Alright. Is there any other general communication from the commission? No more general communication, we'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Just for everybody's benefit, just acknowledge the town hall tomorrow. It's not our town hall, but it's about the project.
It's a resident-led town hall. It sounds like site plans, as are currently published for the school project, are going to be presented there. But there is no participation by the developer.
No.
There's no participation by the city. It's a completely resident-led event.
Okay. Alright. If there's no other further general communication from the commissioners?
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved to adjourn?
Commissioner Hammond, seconds.
We are adjourned.